Welcome to the Addison Township Board Meeting. Today is July 16th at 6:00 and we're located here at the 1440 Rochester Road Township Hall. If we could all stand for the pledge, please. And Joel, you're our veteran, could you start, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could keep standing, please.
Thank you God for this wonderful day, for bringing us all here together, help us forward to guide with wisdom, in just name, amen.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll get started if we could have roll call, please. I know Linda is on her way, so...
She is. On the consent.
Here.
Joe King.
Here.
Jacob Newby.
Here.
Lori Fisher.
Here.
Bennett, present. Supervisor Pearson.
Here. Okay, we're all counted for with Linda coming in shortly. Okay, any announcements?
No.
Petitions?
No.
Department reports, as usual, available in my office, just contact my deputy, she'll make them available. Approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll support.
Any discussion? Not hearing any, could we have roll call on that, please?
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Joe King.
Aye.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, we'll move on then. Item number one, consent agenda.
Yes, we have three items. The June 18th, 2018 minutes, bills is paid for June, authorized with receipts up to $500 for the strawberry festival expenses, and that will come from community projects.
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Any motion or second, any discussion? Dr. Nick, we'll call that, please.
Joe King.
Aye.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, okay, we'll move on then to item number two, A, B, and C. This is where I get to do all the talking again. We'll start out with two A, which is the public hearing resolution for the Special Assessment District, the SAD, for gravel ridge and Deer Point. The township received petitions signed by more than 50% of the record owners based on the tax rules of Oakland County constituting more than 50% of the total frontage of the proposed SAD requesting the amount of $200 per parcel for each of the next five years, winter tax 2018 through winter tax 2022, for the purpose of road maintenance and may include the improvements of grading chloride fill and snow removal and a 5% collection fee for the township. Proper notice of the first hearing has been published and mailed by first-class mail to each property owner within the proposed SAD. Now, this is where we listen, and we have a public hearing about this, and that's where we listen to the residents if they have something to say about this SAD. So at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing, and we'll call it 6:02. And if anybody has anything to say about the SAD for gravel ridge and Deer Point, just please come forward and tell us if you have any concerns for or against, if anybody has anything they'd like to say. Once again, I'll ask if anybody has anything else to say about the SAD for gravel ridge and Deer Point, please come forward. Not hearing any. I would close the meeting at 6:03.
I'd like to move the resolution authorizing the SAD for gravel ridge, road, deer point on private roads in Addison Township. I'll support.
Do we have a motion and support? Any other discussion with board members? Not hearing any? Could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Joe King.
Aye.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, that resolution is so moved. I will move on to two B, another SAD. This is the Glen Meadow, Glenwood, Glenview, Glen Cove, and Glen Valley. Guess everybody lives on Glen something or other, right? The township board received petitions signed by more than 50% of the record owners based on the tax rules of Oakland County constituting more than 50% of the total frontage of the proposed SAD requesting the amount of $175 per parcel for each of the next five years, winter tax 2018 through winter tax 2022, for the purpose of maintenance of the asphalt roads, including snow removal, crack filling, shoulder maintenance, and surface repair and a 5% collection fee for the township. Proper notice of the first hearing has been published and mailed by first-class mail to each property owner within the proposed SAD. Once again, this is where we listen. If any of the homeowners or property owners on that road would like to speak, we'll open the meeting at 6:04. Welcome, Linda.
Sorry to wait.
6:04, no, we already got you covered. So, if anybody would like to come and speak for or against, if you'd like us to hear something, please come forward. Once again, this is on Glen Meadow, Glenwood, Glenview, Glen Cove, and Glen Valley. Say it one more time, if anybody'd like to come and speak on that. Not hearing anybody, we'll close the meeting then at 6:05. Anything from the board?
I'll make a motion to move the resolution authorizing an SAD for Glen Meadow, Glenwood, Glenview, Glen Cove, and Glen Valley.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion on that? Not hearing any, could we have roll call on that, please?
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Joe King.
Aye.
Linda Garrett.
Yes.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, that resolution is so moved, that didn't hurt a bit, did it? We'll move on to, this would be two C. That'd be Donna Mae and Marcy Lane. Township board received petitions signed by more than 50% of the record owners based on the tax rules of Oakland County constituting more than 50% of the total frontage of the proposed SAD requesting the amount of $300 per parcel for each of the next five years, winter tax 2018 through winter tax 2022, for the purpose of road maintenance and/or snow plowing and may include the improvements of additional gravel and a 10% collection fee for the township. Proper notice of the first hearing has been published and mailed by the first-class mail to each property owner within the proposed SAD. Once again, this is where we listen, if anybody on those streets or the public has anything to say, please come forward, but we'll open the public hearing and we'll call this one at 6:07.
I don't want you to feel left out, Bruce.
Okay.
Ricky Klein, two six six, Donna Mae. I just wanted personally to thank the girls in the office. We kind of got held back a little bit by our signature collection, and if anything, this had probably made our community come a little bit closer with the positive attitude of everybody signing it, and I appreciate it, and Lori and Jamie did a fantastic job keeping us all together.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything?
I just have a question. Another one I heard is a 5% collection fee, why would there be 10% for us? Heather, whoever buys that.
If the township handles everything and issues, handles the books and issue the ticket for the checks out to the suppliers or the maintenance, then we collect 10%, but we do everything. If all we do is collect and the treasurer doesn't issue the checks out and everything, then it's 5%.
Okay, so if we decide, how do we go about if we want to change that? How are we going to change that?
Well, we can...
New petition, I think.
Yeah, it'd be a new petition because it's on the petition now, it's worded, so...
Okay.
You'd really want to do that next time, maybe?
No, no, I'm just saying if we want to.
Yeah, what it is, is a lot of people, some people have somebody on the road that wants to be the treasurer, they write the checks out and everything, and they handle it. Some people say, I don't want anything to do with that.
I just know the difference.
That's what it is.
Thank you for explaining that.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that they'd like to add? Okay, I'd like to close the meeting then, we'll close it at 6:09. Anybody like to put forth a resolution there?
I'll move the resolution authorizing an SAD for Donna Mae and Marcy Lane, private roads in Addison Township.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion on this? Any discussion whatsoever? Hearing none, could we have roll call, please?
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Joe King.
Aye.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. Resolution is moved. So you're all set on all of your SADs, this is the first hearing, there'll be one more hearing, that will be in September, and then we go through the same thing and be posting a newspaper, and then that's the end of it, so...
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we move on to item number three now.
Do you have a date, September yet?
It'd be the third Monday of September, which...
You do a 17th?
Yep, September 17th will be the second meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three, splash pad at the township park here. In February, the board made a motion to earmark the $35,000 that we received for the renewal contract from the cell tower here in the parking lot to potentially develop a splash pad in the park here. We were asked to do some research, and we did, and we were going to bring back some information for the board so they could give us direction. We contacted several companies and pool companies, and we haven't had Florida affirm that said they could give us splash pad firms nearby, and that was consulting a company. We found three firms now, including Vortex, but there aren't that many firms out there that do this, so by comparing what the other township has done, we did find out that Vortex is through the national purchasing partners, which is the same kind of deal that when we buy fire engines, it's through a government process where the bids have already been done, and then we get the results, and so the fire department waves the ordinances also. As far as I see, we did the research, and the board needs to direct us a little bit more on what the pleasure is. I had just like three questions. We can move forward with this firm, which is Vortex, exploring the options of a well or recirculating water. We can authorize to seek other bids of the same size, or we can say no to the consent, continue to have our residents drive over to Oxford or other facilities to use it, and... But I need to hear something from the board, what your pleasure is before we put more effort into this. Now, we do have Angie who is, where is she? Right there, and she is from Vortex, and she is the one that kind of put a lot of this information together, and I thought it'd be great to bring her here so the board can ask some questions so that you can get some answers as they have done any other projects, so if you could come forward.
Would you want to say anything about splash pads and jungle first?
Sure, I could talk a little bit about what we kind of went over, and so this is just a preliminary design we kind of came up with. This is a flow-through design, we could go recirculate if you want, but this is super low flow, it only does about 75, I think, gallons per minute. I think it's about 68 by 40, I think the location we were talking about was maybe over there by the playground. It's a super quick install as well. Our company comes in and does everything internally as far as running all the pipes and getting everything hooked up, but we would ask, you know, the city to sub out the concrete and excavation because you have, you know, you could do it for less money than what we could do it because we would have to sub it out and do all that. So, this is just kind of what we came up with. The dumpy bucket is the number one all over. Every kid wants the dumpy bucket, they all run to it before it dumps. It has all different features on here, so if it's a toddler to a grandpa, so, yep, concrete finish, heavy room finish on the concrete, and flow-through system is this.
Can you explain what a flow-through system is?
Sure. The water would go to sewer instead of going to a recirculating system to be reused on the pad, and the water could also go to a creek, or if you had someplace else that you wanted the runoff water to go, that could be done as well.
And what we have in, as a township here, is we do have a well that meets the need, which is the well at the fire department, and we do have these storm drains. The parking lot there runs right in the same area, so, and those are things that we need to, if the board would like me to go forward, those are things I have to then start handling on the research, but I just need to hear from the board what their pleasure is.
I'd like to ask one question because I don't recall. You gave us a version A and a version B. Version A is one price, what's the difference between the A and the B plan?
The B plan, this is the B plan, we took off a few features and added a few things that kind of brought the cost down and the water flow consumption down as well. So this is the B, and then of course we added the happy face on the bucket. So there's really not that much difference, the size is the same, it was just some tweaks of some features to kind of get the water flow down.
And I think this is the first time the board's hearing this, because Bruce and I have been able to kind of research all of it. Please ask your questions. We were concerned about the water being too cold if it ran all the time, so we asked what the recirculation, how much it would bring up the temperature. Were you able to get a more definitive response to that?
Yes, it will bring up the temperature, but it's not a ton, it's five to seven degrees, depending on the weather outside, because the holding tank is underground, you're still getting water from the well, it's not a constant run like a flow-through system where you're touching the activator and the water's coming right from the well, the flow-through, and it's getting, you know, no chance to warm up, so to speak. The recirculating system, it does go through, you know, the tanks, the cleaning, and that does increase the temperature a little bit. We've had communities ask about putting in something to heat the water, but at the end of the day, I feel like, you know, it's not really needed, and the kids don't care that it's, you know, 55 or even, you know, 60 degrees. It's not like jumping into a pool that, it's a splash, you know, you're already getting drenched, but you can get out of it, get warmed back up, and come back in, so it's a little different than having a cold pool, have a cold splash pad, it's okay.
Anybody on the board here, any questions?
Yeah, I read through the package and noted there were apparently two different ones, one was like 120 gallons per minute and the other one was maybe around 100, but I, you know, I questioned whether the existing pump and well can accommodate that flow rate, that's pretty significant. There's also water quality issues, the, just one of the spec sheets called out for a certain free available chlorine and no iron present. I know a lot of the well water in Addison has got iron, which will lead to staining of the concrete surfaces and possible fouling of whatever jets you got. If we were to engineer this, I would, if the decision for other reasons was to go forward, I wouldn't be comfortable without investigating the underlying engineering and providing the water. It's supposed to be a two-inch inlet at 35 PSI, that's going to be difficult to sustain with just a, you know, a regular home well and a pressure tank. I think you'd, you'd probably invariably want to go to a system with makeup and a recirc.
Well, we did, we did check on that, and the well for the township is not adequate, but the well at the fire hall is adequate, more than adequate. It has, I believe we said that one over there has a capability of something like 150 gallons per minute, and we're using how many on this one?
If it's all on, it's about 75, but what we do too to lower the rate of water is there's an activator on here, so when a kid comes and pushes it, it just runs for a four to six-minute cycle and then shuts off. And if we want to reduce even more, then all the features don't come on every cycle. They come on for a couple minutes, then go off, and then the other ones come on. The only one that runs every single cycle is the dumpy bucket because it takes so long to fill, so there's ways to even reduce that.
So you need to reduce it from 100 to 75, you're still talking about a 50% duty cycle on the pump, which is significant, and I really question how long your typical well pump would last at that kind of duty cycle. I think I really would like to investigate that portion of it a little further.
I did call B and B well, and they did put the pump in, and he said it'd be no problem, it could run for a long, long time without a problem because they cool by water.
Yeah.
And then I did go over to Oxford at their splash pad, and I did observe that, yeah, there were a lot of kids there, and yet, you are right, there is some rust. I talked to Ron Davis, who is the director of the parks over there, and he says that that's why their cement is red, so that you don't see that, and he says there is that little factor with the well, and he says, and we have no water system out here, so we don't, they don't have an option on that, and he doesn't either.
So that's the Oxford splash pad is all well?
Yes, all well, it's the exact same as what they're stating right here, and I did talk to him about that, and he said, yeah, it's a little inconvenience, but, and I did talk to the one gentleman over here that said he would donate, he puts in the splash pads of cement work and everything, he said he would donate his services, along with, I have the other donated services for the bulldozers and the equipment to do this, and he did say that, yeah, he runs a stamped concrete company, and he can put a dye in there that changes the whole color of the cement to match rust, simple as that, so...
Turned on, I don't know what to call it. And then also the colors that you picked out.
Right, and then the colors, I did talk to Ron Davis over here, he said just don't pick out white or yellow for the, the toys. The sprayers here though, they're big enough sprays, they're not a real fine spray, so you don't get the maintenance problem with the sprays. We're not, we're talking about a big bucket that fills up, and then once it fills up, it comes down, hits a plate, and shoots the water at different directions, so it's, he doesn't have any maintenance problem with that part, it's just, he says, some of the colors, just color, but he, they, once a week, they go in there with a spray bottle, a little pump one, and they put that on there, so he just said, pick your colors.
And maintenance was another item that the package was silent to, is it, what layup is required for winterization, for example?
Winterization on this unit flow-through system is really easy, just open all the valves on the bottom, it's a gravity drain, you blow out the features, that's it. For a...
You mean blow them out with air, or?
Yep. And for a recirculating system, there is more maintenance, you do need someone outside daily to check the chlorine and the levels of the water and do some testing, and you have to keep a log for the DEQ department, we require that. Flow-through system, if you have a maintenance person, check it a couple times a week, you're just checking to make sure that your drain is not full of debris, it can be half-full, you know, but you just want to make sure that, you know, that's not full of debris. So flow-through, once or twice a week, someone out there, WQMS, where we circulate system is daily.
So the flow-through hardly has any maintenance?
What's that?
The flow-through hardly has any maintenance?
Hardly at all. And then we provide 100% training and winterization, the first year for sure. For the flow-through, you'll get it, you know, 15, 20 minutes. For the recirculating system, we come in and do the startup, and then in the winter we come back and do the shutdown with full training, obviously videos and user manual and install that.
You're asking for opinions, I'm just going to go. I think it's a great idea, we don't have a beach here. The kids really don't have anything to do in the summertime. I remember bringing my kids to either Stony or whatever lake is around. This would be a really nice place for the families to come and bring their kids, cool off, and enjoy our park. I actually told one of our seniors that we were thinking about doing this, and the wife just says, okay, but the kids, I'm going to run in too, so I think it would be a really nice family event. I've been calling other communities that have these, one of which, the response was it has now become their feature point of their parks, that it just draws so many people just to get out there. And then the letters that I forwarded you guys from a resident who's actually starting a miniature kickball league. It was so neat to see the pictures, that people are actually using this facility now. We want to get our kids out, we want them to play instead of stare at their phones. I think this is excellent. I think we do need to research a little bit more, but I think the concept is excellent for the kids and adults.
Great. I really appreciate your time, Angie, and the board thinking out of the box on this. I personally just don't feel that this is the right spot for this type of thing. I have concerns about we don't have restrooms or changing facilities, I'm not sure, you know, we're going to have wet kids running through the lobby and after hours, I'm not sure where everybody's going to go to use the restroom. It can only be used two, two and a half months out of the year. I have concerns about the ongoing maintenance costs and who's going to maintain it, we don't have a DPW department, so I'm not sure who's going to be checking to make sure everything's running smoothly. And we did do a pretty thorough master plan update in July of 2017 for our parks, and we only got maybe 40 responses back, but a splash pad actually was mentioned in one of them, it was kind of in asking for more things for families to do, but we had a lot of other positive feedback in other areas, and I would really rather see maybe our existing park improved and maybe a larger jungle gym out there, or some, you know, updated swing sets, something for a little wider of an age group to use. Looking at SEMCOG, it seems to me that something like this is mostly going to appeal to two to seven-year-olds, and we probably only have maybe 300 in the township, so even 300 to 400 kids of that age range, that's 5% of the township. It just, personally, I think it's a lot of money to spend, and I'm not sure that we're, it's the best bang for the buck.
I agree.
All right, I'll jump in. I think it's a great idea. It only might be 2% or 3% of kids in the township, but I know there's quite a few kids. I used to drive school bus, so I know you have a lot of, you have a lot of kids. I think it's a great idea. I first saw it when I was a GM down to Rent Center. If you've been down to the Rent Center, our headquarters, we have a splash pad right down by the river. Okay, it's not as elaborate as this, it's just a simple one, kids just go crazy. I think it's a great idea. Only a couple of months out of the year, yeah, that's true. I have my boat in Lakeville Lake, you know, and I have it in there for the whole three months, summer in Michigan, you know, so, I mean, that's just the way it is.
We live in Michigan.
We live in Michigan. And furthermore, I think it's a good idea to use the money that we're getting from the lease of the tower to give back to the community. I think that's a good thing. I would be very supportive for the system that doesn't take that much maintenance, the rust, you know, the rust in the pump, I think you have a good point. The fire department well, I'm familiar with that, that's a very capable well, I think it could do that. I'm in favor of it, and I'd like to see this go forward.
I just have one thing to say, you're looking at the maintenance department right here. I'm the guy that gets up on the roof and cleans the gutters and does all, and puts it in the sledding hill and throws the grass seed out. Yeah, the maintenance, we do have people here, like a little while ago, we talked about the blowing out of the system. Kent's Lawn Service, he comes in and he handled, he donated the whole sprinkler system for our grass here and everything, and he does the blowouts in the fall, so I'm sure Kent would do the blowouts. We do actually have someone that does help out, we have hired one of the gentlemen up in the village, and he maintains all of the restrooms in the park. He goes in there every week and cleans them, makes sure there's everything in there, and so that is taken care of, so I have no problem with him coming over here also and doing a little bit of maintenance, he's more than capable. As far as the restrooms, we always had a restroom here, we always had just porta-johns down the hill here, the only reason we took them out because we were doing so much construction and everything down at the bottom of the hill to put the new ball field in and everything, and that was all done with volunteers, and so we just didn't have the porta-john here, so I have no problem putting the porta-john back here so that that's available, and I have no problem with kids coming into our township, I'd like to see them in our township anyhow because it's pretty boring all day long otherwise, but I have no problem with them coming in there, I don't think we're going to have hundreds of them coming in, I think they're more than welcome to come use the facility, after all, it's here for them too, as well as everybody else. I can go either way, you know, I have a lot of projects, you know, I'm looking at putting a sled retriever coming up the hill here, they have one over in Brandon, I just researched that today, I can put my efforts in that, okay? You know, I have another park over here where I'm putting a handicap dock in with volunteers to get over on Lake George, I can put my efforts in that. I'm just saying that if you want this done, I have the knowledge to do it, I have the connections to do it, and generally, it's done greatly with volunteers in this community who want to donate, and if you want to go forward with it, this is the time to do it. If you don't want to use the information that I have, then I can go on to... If you don't wanna use the, uh, information that I have, then I can go on to other projects that I can do, that I have volunteers to help me with too, but, um-
We'd like you to do all of it.
Yes, yes. I mean, as you know, we've done an awful lot in this township the last 10 years, and the majority's been done with volunteers. Like I say, you can't live in this township unless you have a bulldozer or a backhoe, and that's a prerequisite, so everybody does go forward, and I do have the commitments that the people will come and do the work. But, if you don't wanna do that, I can move on to other projects, but this, to me, seems like it's a nice project, and I'm not saying it, it's feasible, but you want us to go forward and, and, uh, keep researching and, and move on, and see if we bring something back to you, that can work.
That's probably one reason why we are able to do that, because we don't have all these different department heads and directors, we're not paying all those wages out, so we're basically looking for those who have the connections. Um, as far as the age group, I thought the age group was much higher than, than what was informed, what is the age group for a splash pad?
So it's, you know, we say it's two to 92, because we have a toddler area that is smaller, lower, you know, streams to, you know, cannons for the teens, but if you look at, um, videos and people at splash pads, it ranges from the toddlers to the grandparents are out there, so, just depends on the person, if they like it, I mean, but, again, it, it ranges from all, all streams, you will get teenagers, um, kids, you know, being babysit with their, um, teenage, you know, babysitters, grandparents babysitting, it's a, and no, you know, no lifeguards needed, so it's safe, 'cause there's zero standing water.
The park committee has recommended, um, approval, not approval, but to continue researching. The park that is out here is supposed to be a highly-used park versus what we have at, um, the nature park, um, it's just like the trails. So I think it's important while we're planning, that we plan different parks and different recreations, so that we do reach the broad spectrum of people, we can't just reach a certain group. Um, so we've now helped the seniors, um, they're able to go to Rochester, and we reimburse them, we started the senior center up again, it's doing very, very well, Marie May's doing an amazing job, so I think it's now, it's time, since we started all these other areas, to bring something in for the kids to do, because really and truly, our kids don't have a lot to do in Addison Township, and I think this would be a big perk for those, for the kids.
Are we looking for a motion or consensus?
Well, I think Bruce has three different ideas, and we're kind of looking at what way you want to go, do we want to go out for bids, do we want to work with Angie, because she's with, with the natural federation-
National purchasing partner.
Thank you. Um, or do we want to go forward? We're, we're bringing this to you because we really can't go any further without direction from the board.
So basically, if we wanna move forward, then, um, we need to decide, do we wanna go with, um, Vortex, who put in the Oxford one, who, like they said, is, the bidding is, is done, and through the government, so we already know what the price is gonna be, that's the government price. Um, and we need to come back with some kind of design, so that should be in the motion, and then, um, and an estimate of the completed project.
Yeah, it's not giving it to them yet, it's just to continue that we'll wanna work with them, and then make the decision, or do we wanna go out for bids?
I think it's a good idea to go with the national purchasing partners, it's kinda like using GSA schedule at the federal level, it's already pre-competitive, you've shown cost reasonableness to competition already.
And in my comparison, I kinda-
And Vortex is through that company, all right, I think going through that spec-
Exactly, exactly.
We're not looking at waiving a purchasing ordinance, or?
Not at this time, or unless we, I guess we could win.
Well, wouldn't we, wouldn't we want a full-blown quote first?
Yeah, that's part of what the, what you just mentioned.
Well, I felt uncomfortable getting a full-blown quote before bringing what we found out to the board, 'cause the board just wanted us to go out and research this.
Right.
So now the board needs to tell us, do we, do we want to find out the rest of the information, and ask it a full-blown quote even from Bruce's people, um, so that the board will have a full idea of what the expenditure is, but we did need that direction.
Okay.
So we need a motion to move forward with, uh, Vortex, with this project, splash pad.
Bring it back to the board with the completed-
With full estimates?
Please.
Okay, so you're making the motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I'll second that.
Does anybody else have any discussion?
Uh, I would like to add something about the pump. Um, pump rated 150 gallons per minute, that's a, that's a, uh, a no restriction, no, open head pump, and you, uh, if you follow along the pump curb and you're running at 35 PSI, you probably would find your, your flow rate significantly reduced, and I, I would like to investigate further what exactly we've got pump-wise right now.
Didn't you say it was 75?
Can we, can we add that?
Showing 78.
78.
I thought it was all on, we can lower it again, so sequences, uh, to even be lower, but.
I, I did, like I said, I did talk to B&amp;B, who put the well in, uh, B&amp;B Well Drilling, and he said that had more than enough, but, but we can ask him to quote the actual, um, outflow of that well to make sure, I mean, that's something we would do anyhow before we even did this project, but I agree, I, we need to get something in writing from B&amp;B Well Drilling, that that well can produce that much at a constant flow.
Would you by any chance have somebody, so that Bruce has one person, do you by some chance have somebody on your staff that could test that flow to be included with this estimate?
To test your water flow?
Yeah, whatever Joel's concerned about, so that we can have two people saying, "Yes, this is good," or?
Um, I can find that out, maybe test it during install, but I don't really typically do a pre-site.
Okay.
All their paperwork was showing that, you know, the, the government entities responsible for getting the water there.
Yes, and that's where we would have to have something in writing from B&amp;B and put the well in, that that would sustain what we're putting in.
Is that good?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just would like to know what it's rated at, 35 PSI outlet head, you know, three feet below the ground, or whatever you are beneath your, your back gravel bed.
Okay.
And that's a good concern.
So that'll be part of the, uh-
So the flow rate can be adjusted, is what you're saying, so what, it's just gonna take longer to fill up the bucket?
The bucket's the only thing that doesn't ever really get adjusted, and that's 35 gallons, uh, it, I mean, you could lower it, but to make the, you know, the splash you want-
I'm just saying the time to fill it up is, is what this flow rate is going to affect, is that what I'm understanding, or?
And the sensors, right, and how long the water stays on, you mentioned, all that affects the flow, right?
Yes.
I have another local well driller, if you want to name the number.
Okay, yeah, we can-
For another comparison.
Yeah, we'll get, um, that would be great.
Think they're out of Ochsford or Dryden?
Yeah, we just need to put a meter on the well, and we'll know, yeah, and that would be great, that would, uh, we'll, uh, research that, if you can give that to me after, that'd be helpful.
Sure, or I'll call you by legal, call you.
Okay, that, okay, so, um, we had a motion, and that, and you wanted to add to that, that we wanna check the water flow, which, we definitely don't wanna put a splash pad and not end up watering.
This should all be part of our research.
Or conversely, just place the, put a situation where we're taking a pump that's not made for continuous duty and operating it as a continuous-duty pump. Good. I've burned up enough pumps over the years to not do that.
What were you doing now?
Running ships.
So we'll check on that, and then, so the, the motion was to go forward, but to make sure we have the information properly noted, that we have the, the power notes around this. And we had a second on that, is that?
Right, right, and then we're gonna get an estimate, right?
We need a contract, a full estimate, even with-
Right, the cement.
Because Bruce is getting a lot of people-
Right.
-for donated labor, that's why we're gonna be able to do this way under caused.
And then it'll come back to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, can we have a real call, please?
Lynda Garrett.
Yes.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Joe King.
Aye.
Roy Fisher.
No.
Bennett, yes, Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, and we'll move on then, thank you. Don't get your swimsuits ready just yet.
It'll tangle.
It's gonna be a year.
It'll tangle. Happens to kids? No.
Well, we just won't turn the lights on.
I like that, that feel about the seniors.
Oh, yeah, she's like-
Okay, now we'll move on to item number four, which is amend the fees for the term of the lawn service agreement, this is with Calvin, uh, Sotheby. Um, Calvin, um, now has much more grass to mow up here, and the hill now is grown, you can see the sledding hill, it's, um, now, there won't be any more erosion, we got the grass growing in there, so now he's gotta cut it, and there's a lot to cut there. Um, he gave us a fee of $60 to cut that, I think that's more than reasonable, because he has to go down, come back around, come up, and go down again each time, so it's gonna take a little bit more, and then the top here, we never had the grass at the top, and he said, "That's an extra, uh, $15." I think that's more than reasonable, um, but I'm bringing that to the board, just so they understand that we do have to revisit the contract. Anybody have any-
I'll make a motion to accept the new fees of $60 and $15 per cut for the remaining term of the agreement with Seminide Services.
Support. Any, huh, any information, anybody have anything? Not hearing, can we have a real call on that, please?
Yes. Joe King.
Aye.
Jacob Newby.
Aye.
Lynda Garrett.
Yes.
Eric Sen.
Yes.
Roy Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes, Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, and that passes, now we'll go on to public forum, does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to say, this is your big chance to be on television, and, uh, any jokes, anything?
Yes.
Go ahead, Chuck.
I-52 dirt point, has K research been done regarding demographics of the township, specifically, the aging population, the decrease of youth within the confines of Addison Township, according to the most recent census? But I'm referring specifically to contemplation of a splash pad.
Um, well, I can tell you that, yes, we do have a lot of retirees in this town, but we do have an awful lot of new families moving in the town also, I mean, even, just the prime example is in Leonard alone, is there's been a resurgence in families moving in to Leonard with children now. Uh, we do have quite a few bills going in right now, so we do have a, a, an aging population, and that's why we hired a, um, person for the senior center, so that, um, we would have activities here, which is now booming, that is, uh, we have, uh, large groups all the time, and with the seniors, like we say, we're paying for seniors to go down to the, um, OPC, so that they can, uh, we're paying 50% of their, uh, fees to go down there, so, I mean, so we're, we're handling the seniors, and we do have the, uh, the kids in this community, and we do have quite a few kids here, so.
Well, I think it's a good thing for 40 children, uh, was the entire allocation of funds for the senior assistant payment to the OPC in Rochester depleted? Was it $5,000, a cent, a dollar, a thousand, or something?
We raised it, uh, we had so many people involved in it that we raised it this last year, and we have more people signed up for it now, I think we raised it up to, was it seven or eight thousand?
Eight, eight, eight thousand.
I don't remember, that's why I-
Right, and now, and now we've, uh, we've made it so that we can also get transportation down there through the North Oakland Transportation Authority, so the seniors who don't have licenses can go down there and swim and use the track, and, and, and if you notice, our seniors now are going on trips where the bus comes up here and picks them up, and takes them to different things now, so.
I'll have no problem calling Leonard Elementary School and asking if there's a increase or decline in theirs, in their enrollment, because I don't really hear Oxford as far as their enrollment's going down, so I think, I think we're okay.
No, their salaries are increasing tremendously.
Their what?
The administrative salaries are increasing, uh, the-
For what now?
At the schools.
I know.
Yeah, but the, the, the splash pad in particular, uh, perhaps a continuous soaking pit for the seniors.
But, but what I can, but what I can tell you is that we renegotiated a contract with Verizon here, so they're paying a good part of this bill here, okay? And, uh, when they came and, and wanted to renew the leases, um, they gave us a, they gave me a figure that was one figure, and I told them that, um, I knew they could do much, much better, and they did do much, much better, so there is some money. We have these towers-
Yes.
...that bring money in to the community, and it's dedicated to the parks, so we try to give everybody a little bit of something here, and if it's the kids need something, we have nothing for them, I can't, I don't wanna have a soccer field, I can't even buy a piece of property, I've tried, I've tried to buy beachfront property, nobody will sell. I tell the people, "Give me the, I don't wanna sell price," and I don't even get that. So I'm trying to get a place for the residents to go to on the water, I can't, I'm trying to buy property where I can put up a pavilion with soccer fields, baseball fields, that's why we got this baseball field here, donated by an Eagle Scout, um, and I put in a sledding hill here, now, I think we're gonna have a big fireplace on the top here with the seating, like you see in Aspen, at the ski mountains on the top, so everybody can stay warm and still watch the kids, and now I'm at the process of bringing in, uh, one of these automatic, um, conveyors that bring you back up the hill for the kids, that, so they can sled all the time. So we're trying to do something in Addison Township, we have passive parks, we put in whole, whole new parking lots, we put in trails, we're putting in docks, all this is money that comes, a lot of it right from those cell towers, and that cell tower up in the Watershed Park is dedicated strictly to, um, the parks, all that money goes in, so then we can buy docks and canoes and different things, and it doesn't come out of the taxpayer money. So this tower right here is the exact same thing, it generates money, and it's time, I think, to give back directly, so you see a direct response to everybody in the community, whether it be senior or kids, you know?
Personally, I applaud that.
Yep.
I like it, the efforts are great, and, as you know, I'm a champion of the township as well as the administration.
Uh, well, I thank you very much for that, 'cause we could take, we could take the money and put it right back in the general fund and do nothing with it, or we can say, "We, we have a great thing going with Verizon, give it back immediately so people see this," and I think it's very, you know, and we have something that, that, we have a goose that keeps blowing the, you know, keeps laying those golden eggs, so let's give it back directly to the people and not order it, so, but anyways, anybody else on public forum? Yes?
Hi, my name's Karen Weeden, I'm soon to be new resident on Glen Meadow, over at our house and stuff, um, I live in Sterling Heights right now, but, so my question about the splash pad is, have you looked into the liability, liability issue? And, um, the other question would be, is there any type of, um, cleaning procedure? I know when my boys were toddlers, if we took them to one, um, one of them became very ill, um, you know, there's a lot of little kids that are in diapers still, so you have that issue, so I was just wondering if there's a cleaning procedure, the liability issue, and then the parking lot here, I was just thinking, if it's really popular, and didn't think that the parking lot might not be large enough.
Well, I hope we, I hope we fill the parking lot, I hope that it'll come here.
Well, yeah, but I mean, then-
I mean, uh, we have an agreement, um, that we can park over in some of the other areas here, we have an agreement with the man who owns the, uh, strip mall there, that we have an agreement with him for extra parking over there, that we, we pay a fee for, and that also takes care of our snow, so I mean-
Oh, that's good.
We have other options, uh, this is, if we go through the, the regular flow system, this is not re-done water, this is fresh water all the time going through, it doesn't come through the system, and yeah, we have, just like here, we have accidents, and we get it taken care of one way or another, you know, I mean, we'll do the proper procedures, bleach or whatever, so, anybody else have anything? Okay, uh, then, legal reports, I don't think we have any, uh, or Addison Township Board reports, we have anything for the board members? Anything from Jacob?
No.
Nothing? Eric, nothing, you're on the different-
We're busy on the CBA, you know?
Okay.
Lots of cases.
No legal reports at this time, uh, communications, any communication?
Yes, I received two, both from the same person, um-
Okay, that'll be enough, thank you.
No, I'm not gonna read all of them, that'll be good. So the first one is, "Thanks again for letting us use the ball field, the first kickball game was a big success, and we anticipate having more kids join us next week." Most of the families that came- Most of the families that came were not aware that the field even existed, and they were very impressed and excited to have the field close by. And then I believe I sent you all the pictures of all the kids climbing up the hill, which I thought was really cool." So then I asked her some more questions, and she was going to take a poll of some local families, and in her opinion, she wrote back to say, "It's unfortunate that we don't have a beach." She is fantasizing about, you know, trying to find a beach for the kids, but she said, "I have to imagine a splash pad or any kind of public kids activity that you guys add to the park will be a huge hit." That's it.
That's it? Okay, supervisor's report. I don't have much, except I would say, "Hope everybody enjoys the Strawberry Festival. That's this weekend up in Leonard." And it should be interesting because it's a political year, so there's always lots of floats and lots of free stuff hand and out.